Good afternoon, everybody. Sorry, we're going to be starting our council meeting a little late. We've got a couple of things that we have to do prior to. And included in that is a couple of proclamations. So is Chris Esperson here? Chris? Ah, all right. You, Andrew? Andrew, come on up. Do you want to make a couple of quick statements about the Native American Heritage Month? Would you please step up?
Hi, my name's Andrew Greenberg. I'm the area director of the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission. On behalf of the Civil and Human Rights Commission, I want to thank the city for this National Native American Heritage Month proclamation. Native American Heritage Month is celebrated in November to showcase the rich culture of the native peoples of this land, as well as honor the Native American and indigenous people who have suffered injustices. Celebrate Native American Heritage Month, I want to encourage everyone to explore the history of the land and cultures around you. Check out events, exhibits, books, documentaries at schools, museums, and your local Des Moines Public Library branch.
Hang right here. Stick with me. Our proclamation reads as follows. Our nation celebrates the history of the Americas and the indigenous peoples' intrinsic connection to this land, their origin stories, their contribution to the development of our country, and whereas President G.W. Bush signed a joint congressional resolution designating November as National American Indian Heritage Month in 1990, and similar proclamations have been issued every year since 1994. And whereas Iowa was once home to more than seventeen different indigenous tribes, including the Iowai, the Sack, the Fox, the Musquawke, the Sioux, Citizen Potawatomi? All right. Panoa, Otawa, and the Missouri. And whereas there is a need to create a consciousness, respect, and endearment for the legacy, the indigenous people's culture, history, including traditional knowledge, experience, labor, technology, science, philosophy, industry, and art, in addition to their cultural relief system that stipulates indigenous people as protectors and stewards of our natural environment for the benefit of all. And whereas Des Moines, which is currently home to nearly ten thousand residents that identify as American Indian or Alaska Native, join other cities across the nation this month to celebrate and honor the heritage of this continent's first people. Now therefore, I, TM Franklin County, on behalf of the City of Des Moines, our city council, our citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2023 as National American Heritage Month. I encourage everyone to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to celebrate a world that is more just, compassionate, and equitable for all. Thank you so much. Come on up. Why don't you step up and kind of tell us what's on?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Josh Hughes. I'm a member of the Iowa European Cultural Connection Board of Directors. I would like to thank the city for the opportunity to issue this proclamation on behalf of our annual Kris Kindle Market, which is going to be next weekend after Thanksgiving weekend at Principal Park in the parking lot. So that's November 30th through December 3rd. The festival, so it's a centuries-old tradition, celebrating traditional Christmas festivals that originated in Central Europe, in Germany. There'll be lots of good cultural food, blue vine and tinder punch, as well as lots of good shopping, and just a great way to get into the holiday winter spirit for folks of all ages, and it's pet-friendly. So I hope that you'll be able to join us next weekend at Principal Park.
Hang right here with me. We have a proclamation that reads as follows. That's the note of attention everybody should have. Whereas the mission of the Iowa European Cultural Connection is to connect all Iowans with European traditions, language, learning, and cultural experiences. And whereas IECC hosts special events and language classes throughout the year, and additionally, many dedicated volunteers present the Des Moines Kris Kindle Market?
Kris Kindle.
Kris Kindle Market annually. And whereas Kris Kindle Market, Des Moines, grew from a concept developed during the Greater Des Moines Leadership Institute. Now, the German-style Christmas Market is the second-largest festival of its kind in the United States. And whereas this year's Kris Kindle Market, Des Moines, will be held November 30th through December 3rd at Principal Park. Now therefore, I, the mayor of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and our citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2023, as Iowa European Cultural Connection and Des Moines Kris Kindle Market Appreciation Day. Let's give them a great big hand. Now, we've got one other thing to do here. We've got a young man that was elected to our city council recently, and we're going to swear him in right now, tonight, to continue representing Ward One. So let's ask the family of the duly-elected individual to come up, if they will, as many as are here. This could be a rather large group. All right. Coleman's, and Mr. Chris Coleman, would you step forward, please, sir? Come on, gang, we want you all right here. I want you to repeat after me. Are you ready?
Are you ready?
I'm ready. I gotta tell you, I put up with this for many years, and now it starts over. Here we go. All right. Repeat after me.
Do I do this?
Yeah. Do, yeah, might as well. All right. We're going to swear him in here. I, Chris Coleman.
I, Chris Coleman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of Ward One council member.
Discharge all the duties of Ward One council member.
In the city of Des Moines, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law.
In the city of Des Moines, Iowa, as here and thereafter required by law.
Something like that.
How close was I?
All right. Congratulations.
That's it?
Let's get a, let's get a little picture here with the family and everybody, don't
Josh, are you able to hear us?
I can't.
All right. I know that you're all excited to get started with the city council meeting, but prior to the start of that, we're going to do the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board meeting. And with that, I will call the, the meeting for November 20th to order and ask the clerk to please take role of the board.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
And how many do we have?
Seven.
Seven. All right. Our Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board, item two, is approving the agenda and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the item passes. Item three is approving the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency payment standards to remain unchanged for the Section 8 program after review with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD-published fiscal year 2024 fair market rents. Board Communication Number 23-515. Any comments, board members?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move item three.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote. My first. Josh?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
All right, the item passes. Could we get a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The meeting is adjourned. Let's now move on to our Des Moines City Council meeting. Our first item on the agenda is call the meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please take role.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Second.
All right, I don't see any amendments to the agenda. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
Hearing none, we'll move to item three, which is approval of the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through thirty-eight. Generally speaking, these are items that will be enacted in one roll called vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules. If council requests an item to be removed, to be considered separately. This evening, I'm going to vote no on five. Councilmember Mandelbaum wishes to speak on twenty-two, and also wishes to speak on Anything else?
Move approval, Your Honor, with those changes.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote. Josh?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
All right. Let's quickly move to item thirty-nine, I believe. All right. There are ten hearings this evening. We have four zoning hearings. Those are forty-two, three, four, and five. Three conveyance hearings and three public improvement authorization hearings. As a reminder, the zoning hearings only. We're going to ask the parties in interest to step up, and those are the individuals that are either the applicant or someone who lives within two hundred and fifty feet that has received notice from the city. And we will ask you to step up as those parties in interest. We'll ask everyone else, please don't step up. We'll let those parties go, and then when they have finished, we'll ask for the general public to make comment on any of the items that you wish to make comment on, and we'll have you step up and do so. But please don't do it before your time, because if you do step up, we will ask you, we consider it disruptive and ask you not to speak, and also ask you to leave the city hall. So please, we'll ask everybody, watch the order, please step up at your time, and we want everybody to hear it. On the other hearing items this evening, any interested person may make germane comments and not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of five minutes per hearing unless the hearing is ended sooner, either for failure to make germane comments or when the public comments cease. As a reminder, on the public improvement hearings, only the comments as to the plans, the specifications, the form of documents, and the engineer's estimate and low bidder designation will be considered germane, and other comments will be considered non-german. So let's start right in with item thirty-nine, which is on a conveyance of a vacated alley right-of-way located south of and adjoining Twenty-Nine Seventeen Maple Street to Semmer Salovek for fifty dollars. Germane comments from the general public will open it up now. Anyone wish to speak on this item?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move item thirty-nine.
Second.
Item thirty-nine has been moved. Ask your vote, Josh?
Seven, yes.
You're right.
Yeah.
Item forty is on a conveyance of a excess city property located at the northeast corner of East Martin Luther King Junior Parkway and Tenth Street adjoining Ten-O-One Raccoon Street to EcoSource LLC for two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Again, let's open it up for comments from the general public on this item regarding the conveyance. Seeing none. Council?
I'll move item forty.
Item forty's been moved, been seconded.
Seven, yes.
Item forty-one, on a conveyance of a permanent easement for underground electric lines in a portion of Columbus Park, Nineteen Twenty-One Southeast First Street to Mid-American Energy Company for two thousand two hundred dollars. Again, any public comments regarding the conveyance for the electric lines? Seeing none?
Seeing none. I'll move item forty-one.
Second.
Item forty-one's been moved and seconded.
I vote yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Seven, yes.
First time through. Item forty-two is on a request from the City of Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency to amend the Plan DSM, creating our Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential to high-density residential and rezone two parcels located at Thirty-three Twelve Eighth Street and Thirty-four Hundred Eighth Street from N-5 Neighborhood District and NX-1 Neighborhood Mixed Use District to NX-2 Neighborhood Mixed District to allow the construction of a new accessory storage and maintenance building and to bring the existing multi-household dwelling into conformance with zoning requirements. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Kris Johansson, who's our executive director, requires six votes. First, let's ask, are there any parties in interest in the audience who would like to make comment here? Any parties in interest? Seeing none. Any general public comments? All right. Seeing none. Council?
Seeing none. I will move item forty-two.
Forty-two A and forty-two B.
Been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote. Josh?
I vote yes.
Item forty-three is on a request from Lone Wolf Realty LLC, Richard Hershey Officer, to rezone land in the city of Seventy-nine Hundred South Ridge Boulevard from MX-Three-V Mixed Use District to MX-Three Mixed Use District to allow the redevelopment of the property for vehicle maintenance, repair, minor and vehicle sales uses within the vehicle sales and service category. Will require six votes due to an opposition. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant, requires six votes. So again, let's open it up and ask if there are any parties in interest that are here that would like to step up and make comment. I see one. Is this the only party in interest? Anybody else? All right, we've got one party in interest. Give us your name and address.
My name is Alicia Cedardoll. I'm an attorney at Whitfield &amp; Eddy, Six-Ninety-Nine Walnut Street here in Des Moines. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant and KenGarf Automotive regarding this rezoning request. KenGarf is a family of car dealerships with several locations around the metro, and our request tonight is pretty straightforward. We're asking council to approve the rezoning of an undeveloped parcel along Highway Sixty-nine and County Line Road from MX-Three-V to MX-Three, essentially just dropping that negative V zoning extension to remove the restriction on vehicle sales. The ultimate goal here is the development of a car dealership featuring new and used car sales and some minor incidental automotive repair work consistent with other KenGarf dealerships around the metro. This would be KenGarf's first new car dealership within Des Moines proper. This would be Ken Garf's first new car dealership within Des Moines proper. We believe this request is appropriate for a number of reasons. The property is located more than a mile south of any other vehicle display lot along the southeast Fourteenth Street and Southridge Corridor. This will be an attractive new development constructed in accordance with city design standards, and we believe that the removal of the restriction will not detract from the city's improvement efforts along this corridor. The proximity of the property to the Highway Five interchange makes this site well-suited to vehicle services and automotive uses, and the change will be in keeping with surrounding zoning classifications, in particular, the EX zoning of the property to the south, as well as light industrial and business park uses proposed in the vicinity and other commercial uses along Southridge Boulevard. We also believe that this rezoning is consistent with similar requests to remove the minus-V extension that counsel has recently approved elsewhere along the southeast Fourteenth Street Corridor. As noted in the council packet, there is some opposition to this request. In the course of our neighborhood outreach efforts regarding the rezoning, neighboring property owners raised a number of design-related concerns, specifically related to lighting, landscaping, and the overall condition of County Line Road. While we have not prepared a proposed site plan at this stage and the drawings we have presented to the city are conceptual only, I do want to underscore that the goal here is to develop an attractive, modern car dealership. We are well aware that this project will likely require improvements to County Line Road, and we are working with city staff regarding those traffic impacts. The feedback we received from community members is under review with our design team and pending approval of the rezoning here tonight. Our design folks will continue to work with the city closely to be responsive to those neighbors' concerns as we move through that site plan process. P&amp;Z did recommend approval of the request, and we would respectfully request that counsel do the same. We would also request that counsel waive the remaining readings tonight and proceed with the final consideration of the ordinance. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Excellent job. You took away all my thunder. We've been working on this project for about a year, and like you said, it's the first in Des Moines proper, and I'm excited for that. And you did an excellent job explaining everything, so I don't have to say anything other than, unless anyone else has anything to add, I'll move forty.
Well, let's see if there's general.
Okay, yep.
Comments from the general public. Any general public comments? Anyone here want to make comment? All right, looks like proceeding.
I will move forty-three A and forty-three B.
All right, been moved and seconded.
Seven yes.
All right. Item forty-four is on a request from Six-Twenty-One Six-Twenty-Five Ovid LLC. Clarissa Cortez is the officer for two parcels located in the vicinity of Six-Twenty-One Ovid Avenue to amend Plan DSM creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential to high-density residential and to rezone the property from N-5 Residential District to limited NX-2 Mixed Use District to allow a third dwelling unit within each of two existing duplex structures. This item was continued from the November sixth, twenty-twenty-three meeting. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant, requires six votes. So again, let's ask, are there any parties in interest present that would like to step up and make some comment here? Applicant here? All right, see no parties in interest. Anyone else want to step up and make any comments on this? All right, seeing none.
I will move item forty-four A and B.
Second.
All right. Forty-four A and B has been moved and seconded. Ask everyone to vote.
Seven yes.
Item forty-five is on a request from Starlink LLC. Becky Hugh is the officer for Nineteen-Hundred Arlington Avenue to amend Plan DSM creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from low-medium density residential to high-density residential and to rezone from N-5 Neighborhood District to NX-1 Mixed Use District to allow the reuse of the existing structure for multiple household residences to go up to seven dwelling units. This item was continued from November sixth of twenty-twenty-three. Choose one alternative below. A is to deny, or B is to continue the hearing to December fourth and direct the city manager and legal department to prepare the necessary legislation to approve. The final ordinance approval on December fourth, twenty-twenty-three will require six votes. Let's first ask, are there any parties in interest? I see a few hands up. We'd ask you all to come up here. We'll ask the applicant to speak first.
My name is Becky Hugh. Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. Mayor? Not many people get it right. So I think everyone is somewhat apprised of what's happening, the council members. I've emailed, you know, about the situation, but I can regurgitate that if you like.
Counsel?
Okay, they're good. So, something else we've considered since, you know, P&amp;Z is our ability to cap, because parking was a consideration. Having one car per unit in our lease agreement is something definitely we'll have, because that was one of the contentious topics. And we've provided quite a few solutions to what we want to see on the outside, and I emailed a rendering just a couple hours ago about the egress, which is a big consideration as well. And we are in the motion of getting CDPG funding, if approved. It's been in the works in the last thirty, sixty days, and it takes a little bit to process those, the application. But until we know density, we can proceed with an exterior site plan, which we must do, to be complying with current city code. So we've done, we've done a lot of conversations with the neighbors. A lot of them are here tonight. I have some tenants that are going to speak on our rehab as well, that live in the neighborhood. And there's one tenant here that's, you know, living in the Drake neighborhood as well to speak on just about what we are as landlords, because one of the contentious topics was us as landlords. So I wanted to build that trust in, you know, talking to the neighbors over time, and I think we've had many, many conversations. But yeah, so I just asked that tonight, that we do what's right to promote equity, not just for homeowners, but just for landlords and also for the tenancy. So that's my ask tonight, for equity, and for you to hear out what has to be said tonight and answer any questions you may have. So appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. I'll ask, are any of you tenants? Are any of you prospective tenants? Okay, these are actual tenants, and then others are neighbors? Okay, good, good. Step up.
Good evening. My name is Tanisha Williams. I live in Nineteen-O-eight Arlington Avenue, Apartment Three. I am the building next to Nineteen Hundred. I am a single mother of two. I work part-time as a certified medication aide by attending part-time in college. I graduated as a practical nurse. I am in college to further my nursing degree. I had a positive experience with my landlords so far. Anything that breaks, they're able to fix it right away. They did a lot of updating in my building, such as the patio, fixing it and repainting it, landscaping. I think it would be a great idea to open up the next building as an apartment building to give opportunities to people like me as a single mom, also going to school, because DMAC is down the street, and also nursing. We're like in between two different hospitals. So yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hey, my name is Andrew Barnes. Apartment Two, Nineteen-O-eight Arlington. I'm just here to speak basically like to their integrity, their great. I had no problem with them. Any inconvenience I had, they made sure it was right. Any work order needed to be put in, they on top of it, soon as they come in, no matter if it's the weekend or not. But I don't know, I don't know. They great to me. I don't got no problem, no worries, no problem. They make sure everything's straight. They keep in touch, anything that goes on in the area. Like we just had like a water problem with the lead. They made sure, they was on top of it, told me, made sure, I know, came and brought the filter the next day. They great to me.
Hi. My name is Melissa Nelson. I live at Sixteen Seventeen Ninth Street, Apartment Seven. They also own that property as well. A little background on me is I am a recently divorced, single woman. My children are out of the home, so I rent a small studio. It's perfect for me. It's within my budget, and as everybody else has said, anything that, you know, that I've had a problem with, they're real prompt on fixing. We recently just had our whole fire escape redone. Looks great, and I've had no problems either. I appreciate being having, being able to have affordable housing.
Hello, councilmembers. My name's Stephen Blake. I live at Thirty-four Thirty-eight University Avenue. I am the tenant that lives in the Drake neighborhood. I just want to offer my opinion and my overall general feel for the property management company. I am a single father as well. I've got the most beautiful six-year-old. I've lived here in Des Moines, Iowa for on and off about sixteen to eighteen years, and I've gotten to experience almost every kind of property management and every kind of landlord there is. Some of the best ones, some larger-scale ones, and hate to use the term, or vernacular term, slumlords, and there's nothing worse than being able to live in a house, a property, or a neighborhood where you don't have the support or the safety of being able to be a father, the safety of your child, and the well-being of being able to live in peace. And with this company here, with this property company, I get all of that and more. Their response time, their open communication has been huge and very appreciative. Anything from minor fixes to general complaints, their ability to offer feedback and to reply is very prompt. And not just that, but they seem like a property company that wants to invest into their community and not just own another building. So with that being said, I am in favor, obviously, of being able to reuse that facility into a multi-tenant housing. I believe that they're fair and firm when it comes to their tenants, obviously. It's not, again, for them, obviously, it's about filling these tendencies and offering people like us who are single parents who have been struggling or whatever, to have a safe place that for us and our children. But also, again, they're going to put in the work to make sure that that house, that property and that community is safe as well. So, thank you.
I'm Diana Rezak, and I live across from the property. I'm also a landlord in Des Moines, and I also provide housing. I would like to have this denied because our neighborhood is saturated with rental. We have complexes that were built as rental. Eighteen-O-five Arlington, thirty-six units. Nineteen-forty Arlington, nine units. Nineteen-fifty-nine Arlington, six units. Two-fifty-three Franklin, twenty-four units. Then we have a number of houses, six to be exact, that have been converted. All of this is in the radius of my house, as these complexes were. Eighteen-twenty Arlington, Nineteen-O-eight Arlington, Nineteen-twenty-four Arlington, Nineteen-forty-four Arlington, Three-One-Nine Franklin, Eighteen-twenty-five Oakland. If you didn't keep up with the count, it is ninety-five rental units within a block radius of my house. I've lived in Sherman Hill. I live in Riverbend now, and one of the things that turned Sherman Hill around was the reduction of houses converted into apartments. I am not questioning the rental company. I am questioning whether we should have another seven rentals within a block of my house, in fact, across my street. I am very proud to live in Des Moines, and I am very proud of the awards we've received, and I want to thank you. I want to thank you. I want to thank you. I want to thank you all, and I'm sure you will in the future, for what you've done to make our city great. And I think this is one of the things we can do, is reduce the houses that have been converted to rentals back to singly, single-family as they were designed, and I thank you all for your time.
Hello, Kathy Hellstern. I'm at Eight-O-three Hickman Road. I'm here on behalf of the Riverbend Neighborhood Association. Mr. Mayor and city council members, thank you so much for including the neighborhood in your decision-making process. After long and difficult discussions, it is the majority view of the Riverbend Neighborhood Association Board that this piece of land should not be rezoned to a high density. Just a short time ago, neighbors in Riverbend worked very hard with the city to develop a neighborhood plan. At that time, it was decided that a reduction in density was an important part of revitalizing the neighborhood and recovering from decades of disinvestment. And we have seen over the last several years how density reduction has helped in other parts of the neighborhood. The rental certificate rule was put in place to give dense disadvantaged neighborhoods a chance to stabilize. No one is suggesting removing multifamily units from Riverbend entirely. But allowing this rule to do what it was intended to do on a small and deliberate scale will continue to aid our neighborhood in its recovery. For the Neighborhood Association, the main concern for this property is certainly not the current owners. It is the future. If the property is rezoned, it will be permanently zoned at a high density, and thus, the means for future stabilization will be eliminated. The property in its highest density has previously been owned by negligent landlords who have allowed it to become a nuisance property and have done damage to our community. We have a glimpse into the future of this property as a heavily dense unit, and if what we already know is any indication, it's not a great future. You must also consider how appealing a dense property like this would be to an out-of-state landlord. When the current owner eventually sells the property, it will look like a great deal to a business owner who needs a nice loss in the write-off column. We already have enough properties in Riverbend that have owners hidden behind layers of LLCs that just continue to allow them to fall into disrepair to get the most money they can out of them. An NX-1 property like this will be very desirable in the future to this type of owner. Please also consider that this corner is already very dense, with a possible total of more than fifty units. If this property has seven units, Starlink LLC alone will own sixteen units on the corner. This is far more than the twelve per acre prescribed by our low-medium-density plan. We do need housing stock in Des Moines, and there is opportunity for developing multifamily units in Riverbend in an intentional way. In fact, there are several vacant lots, as well as other properties in the neighborhood like Fourteen Twenty-seven Fifth Avenue and Seventeen Twenty-six Oakland that were designed to be multifamily and sit on the nuisance list in desperate need of rehabilitation before we lose them completely. Planning for well-designed multifamily units is much better for all residents than just shoehorning them into single-family homes on single-family lots. Yes, we need housing stock in our city, but as Plan DSM and the neighborhood plan indicate, the best way to create healthy neighborhoods is to mix density throughout all neighborhoods and not just cluster it into one small area. Finally, we have been made to fear that if the property remains zoned as single-family, no one will want it and it will sit empty. But the reality is that even now, in this economy, we are seeing homes being brought back to life in other neighborhoods in Des Moines. In fact, Credo Capital, of which Starlink is a subsidiary, has refurbished single-family homes, including in Riverbend. And the best news is that they have refurbished a single-family residence through a relationship with Invest DSM, so this could be a great opportunity for Riverbend to get its first flicker of Invest DSM support. Beyond that, many homes in our neighborhood have been bought by people who took them from multifamily to single-family, which has preserved those homes for future residents and continues to add to the vibrancy of our community. And because our neighborhood is very diverse and a single-family can consist of multiple generations living in one home, large, single- generations living in one home, large, single-family homes actually help foster diversity in Riverbend. For us, it came down to this, rezoning is permanent, and it sets a precedent that could unravel all the work the neighborhood has done over the last decades to stabilize and provide community for everyone. Please, let's find another way. Thank you.
Hello, Angela Thorne, I live at thirteen thirty Ninth Street, I lived in Riverbend my whole life, I am also a landlord and a property manager, uh, in Riverbend, so I'm very invested in the community. Uh, I've seen what's been gone from the eighties till now, and, uh, in the last twenty years, uh, when I moved back as an adult, uh, I took my home from a six-dwelling home to a single dwelling, um, that made a huge difference on our street and, uh, part of our community. Uh, several of us who were involved in that, door knocked, like everyone did on campaigning, and went to our neighbors, and they all agreed that we should, uh, have any house that was multifamily, that lost their rental certificate, to be a single dwelling, and at this moment, I do deny this. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more parties in interest, do we have any, uh, general public comments? We ask you to step up. You folks can sit down if you want now.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Chad Nelson, I live at twelve thirty-six Ninth Street in the historic Riverbend neighborhood. I am the sole proprietor of a historic window restoration and preservation business, I'm a member of several professional preservation trade organizations, as well as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission here in Des Moines, and a board member of the Riverbend Neighborhood Association. I do not come here speaking on behalf of any of these organizations, I just wish to, uh, inform you that I am invested in my neighborhood, my city, as well as historic preservation. Maintaining the current zoning designation and restoring this house to its original single-family configuration will enhance its historical authenticity and integrity and help restore the historical fabric that is already so frayed in the Riverbend neighborhood. Countless historic homes have been lost in this neighborhood over the past decades due to poor maintenance of landlords who'd continued to disrespect the properties they owned until the point of demolition. With each home lost or neglect, so too does the neighborhood lose the original materials, construction methods, and architectural features that served as a tangible connection to the past. As these single-family houses now used as multifamily houses continue to degrade and are ultimately lost, the neighborhood's sense of continuity and identity is lost, and so is the understanding of the neighborhood's history and heritage. There's a reason the rental certificate rule that automatically rezoned this property to the single-family was put in place and will surely be part of this reason, I just referred to you to page thirty-one of Des Moines Citywide Historic Preservation Plan, which you just approved two months ago, this is all listed in there, I ask you not to rezone this property. Thank you very much for your time.
If I could, uh, show a photo of the affected property, it's in the packet. My name's Dave Hellstern, I live at eight oh three Hickman in Riverbend, my lovely wife Kathy is the president of Riverbend. Uh, I'm here tonight, yes, to ask that you deny this, uh, this rezoning. The reason being is, as others have said, it's against the Des Moines, uh, plan to reduce density. It's against the Riverbend Association's two thousand sixteen neighborhood plan, um, again, to reduce density and to increase opportunities for homeownership. You've previously, as a board, denied this, uh, at least twice that we could find. Once was just last year, uh, October third, twenty twenty-two, at thirty-one twenty-five Kingman, over in the Drake neighborhood, and in that one, there was not enough evidence to show that the property would be, what it would look like if it were allowed to be rezoned, just like here, we have not gotten any information about what this property would actually look like. And then, uh, sixteen seventeen Oakland, which is just down the street, uh, and that was denied for these same reasons, uh, too much density, so, I would ask that you deny. Are there any other speakers? All right, seeing none, council, any comments?
Well, um, your Ward One council member has something to say, haven't heard that for a while. Uh, I'm glad that you delayed this, uh, two weeks ago so that, so that I could be here and, um, represent the neighborhood. I'm, I'm gonna move A, which is to deny, but I would like to make just a quick comment. First off, Becky, to your, you and your team, I appreciate the conversation that we had at, at a public event, I'm tremendously impressed by your vision and the company and the other projects you've done. I wish my first vote was supporting Credo and, uh, Starlink, uh, but I, I can't support you today, I hope we work together because you guys have the right kind of energy that Des Moines needs, and I, I hope we can find the right projects to work together on. That said, this is not the right project, um, uh, for, for seven apartments, and I, I was lucky to have been here in my previous service on the council when the, when the council wrestled with the new historic rules. It was not easy, I was not actually easy to convince, um, because there's just a lot of concern about these kinds of things, but in this case, it was convincing and unanimous, and the neighborhoods were, were real warriors in trying to protect their neighborhood. Now we have other people that we've denied for, you know, similar projects, and we have countless other people who have invested in their property because they thought these were the new rules. So we can't turn our backs on either, either people that this policy has already, um, impacted. I'm really thankful for all the members of the community that helped educate me on this, I've been by, they've put up a picture of it, um, uh, the property can be really, really cool, um, but I don't think it's the best use of that property for the kinds of, you know, exterior wooden staircases and, and leading over, um, other parts of, of, of the building. I think we can partner to do something better with it, Becky, I hope you'll, um, give me a chance to help you with that, but for now, my motion would be to deny if the property owner, uh, had an idea rather than this, what I kind of consider as spot zoning, um, we, we don't do that. Um, they do have an avenue to talk to the zoning board of adjustment, and, um, and I do think that the people in the neighborhood want to be cooperative to make sure that it's a project that can be done and is successful, I, I just don't think there's gonna be support, um, for, um, you know, a half dozen apartments there, so that's my motion.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, ask everybody to vote.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may.
You may.
Uh, I, I mean, I, I want to first, uh, thank Becky and her team, uh, and all the, the neighbors who, who came and spoke about this. Uh, I, I find this to be a close call, uh, and while I recognize the work that has been done to, uh, to address, uh, density concerns and to, to move back and, and capture single-family homes, I, I think that is important, and I think that that's important for the neighborhoods. Uh, I think the work that has, uh, gone into everyone speaking up today, uh, demonstrates that, uh, and I also think that, uh, it, it's important to acknowledge that maybe this is a, a closer call, uh, than a number of other circumstances where this might happen. So, for example, this was previously a, a seven-unit home, it was bought to, uh, to be renovated and improved as a, a, a seven-unit rental, uh, and there was very clearly an error and mistake made, uh, in, in that process. But this is not a situation where there's been a particularly long lapse, the, the error was caught. Uh, I would be open in situations like this to, uh, to narrow exceptions. Now I think maybe the zoning board of adjustment is the right way to pursue that, uh, and to have it, have a little more control for the neighborhood. Uh, I also have a little experience having lived in a, uh, converted home that was a rental myself, uh, one right after, uh, right after the ownership transferred. Uh, this was twenty years ago, I was in my early twenties, uh, one of my favorite apartment rentals ever, uh, and the, the new owners, uh, made some improvements before we moved in, but their long-term goal was to convert it back into a single-family home. Uh, here we are twenty years later, they are just now in the process of doing so, because it required a significant amount of investment to be effective in doing that. Uh, and I want to make sure, as we push towards this being converted into a single-family home, that, that we help make that happen, uh, in a way that works, and we don't lead to a situation where this ends up, uh, empty, uh, and blighted or worse. Now, with all that said, uh, I'm gonna defer to, uh, my new colleague, the Ward One council member, and the input of the neighbors, uh, and I will vote in support of the motion, but I felt it was a closer call and, and worth just putting that on the record, so thank you for indulging me.
Seven, yes.
Item forty-six is on the fourth and Grand Parking Garage Electrical Improvements, Resolution Improving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Receive and File the Bids in Designating the Lowest Responsive Responsible Bitter is Van Mannen Electric, Inc. Nathan S. Van Mannen is the president, six hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred dollars, Council Communication Number twenty-three dash five oh nine. And again, um, we'll open it up quickly for the general public to make any plans regarding the plans, the specs, form of documents, or the engineer's estimate, or the low bidder designation. Anybody want to? Don't see anybody stepping up regarding the parking garage.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item forty-six.
Second.
And A.
And A.
Forty-six and forty-six A, thank you. And I vote yes.
All righty.
Seven, yes.
Item forty-seven is on the Sixteenth Street Area Reconstruction and Trail Connection, a resolution improving the plan's specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, receive and file bids in designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as Chekar Engineering, P L C. Chandra Chekar is the president, three million two hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents, Council Communication Number twenty-three dash five oh seven, A is the approval of the contract and the bond. And again, we'll open it up for any comments regarding the plans, specifications, the form of the documents, engineer's estimate, the low bidder designation. Anybody? Seeing none?
I'm happy to, uh, move item fifty-seven, or forty-seven and forty-seven A, it's a great improvement to the trail system connecting the neighborhood to the trail.
Second.
Moved and seconded, ask everybody to vote. Scott?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Item forty-eight is on the twenty twenty-four Traffic Signal Replacement Contract One, Resolution Improving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Receive and File Bids in Designating the Lowest Responsive Responsible Bitter is Klein Electric, Inc., doing business as Heartland Underground Solutions. Shane Klein is the president, three hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and five dollars and ninety-five cents, Council Communication Number twenty-three dash five oh eight, A is approval of the contract and the bond, and again, we'll open it up for any comments regarding the plans, the specs, uh, the form of the documents, the engineer's estimate, or the low bidder designation. Does she want to speak?
Oh.
Okay, should we give her, why don't we give her the mic, and she doesn't have to Hopefully that'll help out a little bit.
Like my concern about our, oh, my name is Heather Armstrong, I live in the second ward, my concern about the traffic signals is that they're always flashing yellow, and then, that's why we have too many accident incidents with people trying to make a left turn, and we need to have like, left, like in s- other states, green arrow, left, left turn on green arrow only, because the problem is, is with these flashing yellow lights, they cause too many incidents, especially on the big busy streets, like Hubble or even Merle Hay, they got too many incidents in those areas, thank you.
All right, Mr. Manager, maybe refer that on to, um, engineering and have them, um, take a look at possibilities.
And provide additional information.
Yep, and provide you with additional information.
I'll move item forty-eight and forty-eight A.
Yes.
And moved and seconded?
Seven, yes.
All right, that completes the hearings at, uh, six oh five. Let's move on and back to, uh, item twenty-two, uh, pulled by Council Member Mantelbaum. Uh, item twenty-two is the first amended and restated urban renewal development agreement with Hoyt LLC for the construction of a forty-seven unit apartment building at six-ten Sixteenth Street and a forty-four unit apartment building at sixteen-nineteen and sixteen-thirteen High Street in approving the conceptual development plan, Council Communication Number twenty-three dash five twelve. Mr. Mantelbaum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, and, and I actually wanted to speak to both this one and I, I've pulled item twenty-four, uh, some of the things I'm saying really apply to both, uh, and so I'm gonna try and just make my comments on this one to, uh, address both of them, but then I'll finish with a, a motion on this one and have a, a separate motion on the, on the next one. Um, and I wanted to, to start off by saying that, that I like both of these projects that, that we'll be discussing, I think they're, they're good projects that will be good for our community, and I want to see them built and I want to see them move forward. We have a lot of these projects that, that come before us as a council, and a lot, a lot of the times, the, the developers come and ask the city and this council to contribute tax dollars to get these projects built, and that's what's in front of us today. And I think it's a serious step to commit tax dollars to a project, and that we should be taking that responsibility seriously. Too often, I think we've been content to just say that because the project probably wouldn't be built without city assistance, that's good enough from a community benefit perspective, and we leave it at that. Uh, but as a city, we're working towards a lot more goals than just, uh, the next good project, and every time that we use taxpayer dollars, I think we should be investing those dollars for maximum benefit for our community to help us reach as many of our goals as possible. And as development projects have been coming up, certainly in my ward, in my time on council, we've been doing a lot of that on a project-by-project basis. We've added affordability and sustainability measures, verifiable payroll on a couple occasions, uh, we've added all-access transit ridership to, to development agreements, all of those things, I think, are really important. And we've had, I've tried to have additional discussions with staff. And we've had, I've tried to have additional discussions with staff about a number of other, other standards as well. But the project-by-project basis, I think, has been limited. It's been a challenge for staff to implement. And, and I think we see some of that with the agreements in front of us tonight. I think they reflect those limitations because there's things that I would still like to see in these agreements that, that staff have not been able to negotiate. And I think it's time that we develop a more comprehensive approach to, or a comprehensive community benefit policy for our development agreements to both formalize some of what has been in past agreements, but to also capture the full range of community benefits that we should expect to see in our economic development projects. And I say that, I recognize that not every project is the same, and that our approach can't be the same and overly prescriptive. And if we develop any policy, we'll need exceptions or different policies for different projects like office conversions to residential, historic rehabs, or an all-affordable project. But I think we're at a point where we need a framework and clear expectation to guide staff and developers moving forward. And our community benefit framework should set those expectations so that when economic development projects are coming before us, not only are we building a new project, but that project should provide quality jobs. It should be sustainable and help us meet our long-term climate goals that we've already adopted. It should contribute to affordable housing. It should contribute to making our community more accessible and work for everyone. We should be looking to get those benefits from economic development projects that we are contributing to. And I want to discuss those things broadly and make a recommendation, but I'm going to start with the piece that is missing in the projects that have been brought before us today and explain a little bit about why that is and what I think we should do. So I want to start with the quality job aspect of our development agreements because it's been something that I've been talking with staff about for a number of months. And in particular, on this project, it was something that I talked about on the first phase and thought that we were going to be able to make more progress on phase two. But what was made clear to me is that staff and developers are not going to make progress on the quality job piece without clear direction from council. So without direction from council, I don't think we will see the changes that I'd like to see. And for a little bit of context, you know, at a meeting just a couple months ago in September, we approved preliminary economic development terms for an assistance package to keep Maverick, the successor to Come and Go, to keep good-paying office jobs in downtown Des Moines. And I'm really excited that we're keeping Maverick here. And we didn't have much discussion about that economic development incentive. No one really batted an eye, and no one had any issue with making requirements about the type of pay that came along with those jobs either. And I think for good reason, because when we provide incentives, we should want the jobs associated with those incentives to be good jobs. And if we can do it for a company like Maverick and for white-collar jobs, why can't we do it for the blue-collar jobs that come with a lot of these economic development incentives? I want every job that we incentivize to be a good job, and I want the folks that are building our community to get a fair shake too. When we are investing in economic development, we should be investing in the folks building our community and their families too. We should be making sure that they get a decent livable wage and benefits, that they have a safe workplace, that they're taken care of if they're injured on the job. And we should be making sure that our developers and all of their contractors follow the law. And at the same time, we should be looking to build our future workforce too. Because I don't want to just build these projects that are in front of us on our agenda tonight. I want to create a community that is capable of building even bigger and better projects in the future. And to make that happen, I think we needed our development agreements to reflect that. So, one of the things that we need to start doing is to be requiring within our development agreements that we address quality jobs and build the workforce of the future. And I think, and one of the things that I tried to address but couldn't here without support from council, is that if we are providing incentives, we should either have construction jobs come in at a prevailing wage, or the developer and contractor should commit to utilizing registered apprenticeships in a portion of the project. I also think that we need accountability in these agreements. You know, one of the things that we saw earlier this year was a project that the city of Cedar Rapids had provided incentives for was being toured by policymakers as it was under construction. And while they were on the job site, they encountered a child that was no older than 12 or 13 years old working on that site without proper safety equipment. Cedar Rapids realized that they shouldn't be incentivizing that and that they should take steps to address it. Well, we should too. Cedar Rapids adopted language in their development agreements to address this, require compliance with state and federal laws as a term of their development agreements. Add verifiable payroll requirements to follow workers' compensation and unemployment insurance requirements. Those are in Cedar Rapids' development agreements, and they should be in ours too. So, when I, when I move this, I'll be asking you to join me to direct staff to negotiate on these items related to this specific project, as well as related to the project for, for item 24 as well. I'm also going to be asking that we direct staff to work on a community benefit project so that we are not doing this on an ad hoc, project-by-project basis, but that we provide staff ongoing direction on these policies as well as some of these others that we've talked about. And I want to talk about the other terms that are in here as well and where I think we need to go on those. Because we've done a lot from a sustainability perspective. We've, and we see some of that in this project itself. You know, we have adopted and already adopted climate goals that are going to direct our work going forward. At a minimum, we should not be providing incentives for projects that would be inconsistent with our goals, or that would ultimately require us to incentivize the project and then to meet the goal to provide incentives to change what's in that project 15, 20 years from now. That is not an effective way to use city taxpayer dollars. And that's why we've seen in projects like this, efficiency requirements, EV charging infrastructure, and all-electric new construction in these agreements. And I think that's a good step, but I think we should be doing more from a sustainability perspective, and that when we explore a community benefit, a community benefit policy, we should look at how we address things like the most recent Energy Conservation Code. So, we are building to the 2012 Energy Conservation Code. There have been three other Energy Conservation Codes adopted since then, the 2015, 2018, and now 2021. We should be incentivizing to the 2021 standard. We should be looking at how we incorporate onsite renewables as part of a community benefit, community benefit policy. And then in multifamily projects like this one, we've been including affordability requirements. Both the projects on our agenda tonight have committed to 10% of the residential units at an affordable rent structure of 65% home rent limits and available to households earning 80% or less of the area median income for the life of the development. Again, I think this is a good starting point, and I support it in these projects. But I also think that we need to provide guidance and push to do more in a community benefit proposal. And so I hope that we think about how we can enhance affordability so that we can look at how we both increase the percentage of affordable units and make the units affordable to more people. And, and again, that's something that I hope as we direct staff with a, an ongoing community development policy, that that is something that we figure out how to address and we task staff with looking into that. It's something that I've raised on both of these projects. We've landed at 10% because there's a comfort level with that. But we have not been able to go past that. Now, one of the reasons that we hear on all of these, all of these, whether it be quality jobs and labor standards to sustainability measures to affordable housing, is that any one of these things will disrupt the finance, finances of the project, and the financial gap will be too great to overcome. And sitting in this position, it's hard to evaluate that and, and know all of the pieces that go into that, requires a certain level of trust. The, you know, the quality jobs and the jobs created during the construction of a project and the sustainability investments are made upfront. We can't go back and, and change that over time. But the affordable housing piece of this is an ongoing commitment that's worked into the agreement. And a number of our development, a number of these developments are sold during the life of the development agreement. And we as council approve the transfer of that development agreement to a new owner. In fact, we had a couple of those just in the last couple of months. And I would like to see us do better there. Because in financing these projects, we're helping these projects and we are providing a significant benefit to get these projects going. We should share in some of the upside of a project that is sold during the life of the development agreement. And I think one of the ways to do that is we should be looking for an additional term to add additional affordable housing that is triggered if the project is sold and transferred to a new owner. And that's another one of the pieces that I'd like us to address tonight. There are a couple other small pieces that I think we should be thinking about, and I'm sure others on the council would have more from a community benefit perspective, that I want to make sure are worked into a staff thinking on a permanent policy. That includes some of what we've done to add DART all-access partnerships in several of our, our projects. A couple examples of those are the Star Gas Station or Star Loft Project, a couple of the projects we've done with, with Newberry, including the James on Grand. Newberry actually liked the DART all-access so much that they applied it and went out and applied it to other properties that they owned, just because we introduced the concept to them during the development agreement process. And I think it makes sense to continue that and to push that as a benefit as well in future projects. And then finally, one of the things, and it doesn't apply to either of these projects tonight, but it does apply to some of our mixed-use projects, that when we talk about community benefit and the commercial space, we need to think about that as an opportunity for our small businesses. Anecdotally, I've heard concerns that some of the projects that we have supported, developers have, have held commercial spaces open to get a premium rent at those spots. Rather than have small businesses that would be a good fit and add immediate benefit to the neighborhood, be able to lease up a space. And that, to me, is a problem with our development agreement. If the, if the developer has an incentive to leave a space vacant rather than to fill it with a small business, and we need to figure out how to address that. And again, I think our community benefit policy is the mechanism for doing that. So, there are things that I've been trying to do and to move forward in my work with staff. Staff have made it clear that they need direction from the full council, and my hope is that tonight that we provide that direction. So with that, I would move forward with item 22, subject to staff negotiating the following term. I would like to add a term that the construction jobs either be at a prevailing wage rate, or the developer and contractor utilize registered apprenticeships. And I'll leave flexibility for there to be a choice there. But I would like to see that relationship, either that wage rate or that relationship with programs where there are registered apprenticeships, so we are building, building that connection going forward. The second, second amendment that I would, would make is that we use the Cedar Rapids' development language as a model to require compliance with state and federal laws as a term of this development agreement and others going forward. That I believe we have our verifiable payroll already in this language, that we add requirements to follow the law around workers' compensation and unemployment insurance as well, again, based on what Cedar Rapids has done. And then the third piece for, for this one is that I would like us to add a term requiring additional affordability of some amount if the project is sold for profit during the life of the development agreement. Again, that, that ensures that we get some of the upside if this isn't, if this project is not held for the life of the project and it is sold for a profit well before the development agreement is done with. And then finally, the last piece of my motion would be to direct staff to work on a comprehensive community benefit policy that addresses the topics that I've covered tonight, the quality job, sustainability, affordability, transit accessibility, and, and small business development. And work to bring that back to council and workshop it so that we have a permanent policy in place, and we don't have to continue to do this as one-offs during council discussions. And I will have a similar motion for, for item 24 when that comes up.
Josh, I have to remind you that this is a item that's on our agenda that has been negotiated. You're speaking of stuff that, that has merit but would involve a big strategic discussion to change policy and code. I am, I, I hear your amendments and I hear the, the motion. I, after, I don't know, 25 minutes here of your explanation of this, we're supposed to vote on item 22 as stated. I see that you do have some amendments, rather lengthy, but involves change in policy and none of which has been negotiated with these folks, has been moved to us, I believe, as it has been accepted by the developer. But we'll see if the council is there. But we'll see if the council, is there a second to this motion?
There's no second, Your Honor. And I just, I need to chime in after 25 minutes of sitting on my hands because, first of all, I appreciate all of Josh's comments. There are some things that are very valid, there are some things that we all need to sit down and have a discussion about. But Josh, you've went out the last four months and promised folks things that you've never talked to any of us about. And now you're going to bring it up at the council table where we need to have a workshop.
Well, let's not get into that. That's a political discussion. You've made a motion, is there a second to that?
I didn't make any motion, I didn't second anything, we just waited.
Okay. There is no second to this motion that I hear.
There are some things that I really like that he's talked about. I think we can do that, but I think it needs to go to legal to find out exactly what can and can't be done.
How about a workshop?
This isn't the setting.
I mean, if we do that, but...
Should be part of our strategic plan moving forward.
Yeah, there are some things that I really like.
Absolutely.
We should do. But I don't think we can do it right here, right now.
No, this is what the developers agreed to.
Can I, if there's no second, I would like to move the item 22 as it is, as been negotiated with the developers.
Sorry, I didn't hear a second. So what is the motion?
The motion is as is, the development that we worked out with our economic development and the developers.
As stated.
As stated in the agenda.
Okay. I will vote no on this one.
Okay.
Six yes, one no.
Josh, you had mentioned that you were combining 22 and 24, but it sounds like maybe you've got more comment on 24.
I mean, I'll make a little more comment on 24 because I think this is in a slightly different posture than the last one. Although I think the last one was a new development term. With item 24 in particular, this is going to be contingent, is my understanding, on HUD financing that has a prevailing wage requirement associated with it. I would like to see us go to the developer and ask that that prevailing wage requirement be reflected in our development agreement, consistent with the financing that they are using. That was included in the council communication. My understanding is that economic development was asking about that, but we certainly have time between preliminary and final terms to get that into an agreement. I would also feel like consideration of getting some of those compliance requirements in this. So those are the things that I would ask for. I will make a, I will make a motion just to move forward with the preliminary terms and ask that the HUD financing and the prevailing wage that goes with that be amended to our preliminary terms going forward. Because I think that is consistent with what is in the blue letter.
Can we do that? I mean, these are just preliminary terms, so...
We've done that on preliminary terms. In fact, this is exactly what we did with the kaleidoscope project on the preliminary terms, is we indicated an expectation for similar terms to come back with us at that project. And we did that at the council table as well.
But isn't this an opportunity that where we could take a look at all of our development agreements and put some policies in place?
I would hope...
Do this.
I would hope we would do that as well. We can certainly do both.
Typically, we don't, ward council members don't sit down and direct staff to do things unless other council members are in favor of it. So if you've been directing staff to do some of these things, none of us have known anything about it other than what we've heard on the street. And so I have issues with being put on the spot about a development agreement with no history or no nothing. I'm happy to sit down. There's some great things that I think that should be in some of these, but that is where we sit down and we have a strategic plan and we have a workshop and we've done it. Since I've sat in this chair, we don't do it sitting here, what he's trying to push. And he knows that.
Okay. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I just, I was asking for clarification that the motion would pass the preliminary terms, but that before the final terms came back, there would be a discussion on additional terms? Is that what I was hearing, Josh? Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes. So on this one in particular, the blue letter references the HUD financing.
Right.
The blue letter on this, I would like to see the same terms required in the HUD financing reflected in our agreement. Separately, the...
This is the development across the street from the Central Iowa Shelter.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
They were checking to make sure that they could do that. They didn't want to get crossways with their HUD financing. But I just want the same requirements with the HUD financing to be reflected in our development agreement.
But they haven't gotten...
This is the preliminary terms. I think as we move it forward, Mr. Manager, we could update where that is and decide where we're going to go. But I think this evening we're asking to approve the preliminary terms. And a request to bring forward a discussion.
Right, or to the final terms.
Right.
What do we, what...
Is that the, is that your movement or motion?
I want to say I have the other part on.
That you, we approve the preliminary terms and ask the manager to bring forward a discussion around the other items before the final terms are agreed to?
Sure, I can amend it to that.
All right. Is that a motion, Josh?
Yes.
So to the preliminary terms that are listed on as stated, right?
Yes.
Right, to just discuss the HUD financing piece before the final, the final term comes back. I'd like there to, separately from this, I would like there to be a broader community benefit discussion. But I think that is relevant to this.
Okay. Mr. Coleman, did you have something?
The amended motion does not dictate anything, it's, right? Nothing? Okay, thank you.
What I understood, Councilmember Mandelbaum, what I understood, the amended motion would be to approve the preliminary terms presented in the resolution and then to direct the manager to bring back the additional items that you talked about in terms of a discussion, but there won't be additional terms necessarily in the agreement. That's what, that's what I think the general consensus at the table is, is what we heard, but we want to make sure for the record that's correct.
Yeah, so repeat what you said, council?
Mr. Attorney, would you kind of repeat what you just stated? I think that that's in terms that you understand and hopefully the rest of us do.
Sure, sure. My understanding of the amended motion was to approve 24, the preliminary terms that are stated in the resolution, and then for the manager to bring back additional discussion of the items that you identified, but not necessarily in additional terms, but potentially in additional terms after that additional discussion.
Sure. We can go forward with that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Are we just voting on what's listed?
The preliminary terms and as it was...
We're not voting on any...
You're also directing the manager to bring back a discussion on terms that you identified, but not necessarily to include those.
But we're not dictating terms.
Yeah. I know I thought that about five minutes into it.
I think so, too.
All right.
I vote yes.
Seven yes.
All right, let's move back to item 49. Item 49 is amending Chapter 30 of the municipal code related to donation bins. Council Communication Number 23-516A is the final consideration of the ordinance above the waivers requested by Eric Lundey, our Deputy Director of Neighborhood Services, and requires six votes. B is approving the amendment to schedule of fees. Council, any discussion? Is there a motion?
Eric?
I'm here. I know there's some questions.
Actually, no discussion or no questions from me. You've done a great job on this. I'm all choked up about it. Thank you for reaching out to the community and coming back with something positive for our schools. It's, I'm sorry, a small way that we can cooperate with the schools and I think they're already getting benefit from the clothing bins. So really nice. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, right. Anybody else have anything?
As we do this, are they on hard surfaces or they're not on hard? Because I've gotten conflicting things, like there's, we're going to use a weed whacker on the grass. I'm just like, okay, wait a minute. So I guess I just need some clarification.
You need more? Mayor members of the council, Eric Lundey, Deputy Director of Neighborhood Services. This in front of you is the version of the draft that was prepared by legal in response to the council workshops. That was vetted in a stakeholder opportunity teleconference. What you have gotten from the operator of the clothes bin is some revisions they would like to see. Those are not reflected in the ordinance in front of you tonight. If you're wanting to go with the ordinance in front of you tonight, you know, that can be voted and approved and staff has also requested waiver of the readings. In the council communication, we did respond to the three proposed revisions. Staff is going to implement whatever the council wants to go with. And we were clear with the stakeholders that that was going to be the case, that we aren't going to make huge fight against, you know, what the council wants to do. But I did want to point out in the communication what maybe some of the drawbacks would be on a couple of the proposed revisions. And if you want to accept all of those or portion of them, then what we would do is ask to continue to the next meeting and we will come back with a draft that would include the modifications that the council wants to see. And then at that time, you could waive the additional readings at that time.
Well, I tell you, we've spent a lot of time on this through a workshop, through stakeholder meetings, things that we just had a 45-minute conversation about that we haven't spent any time on, other than individually talking to people. So I'm happy to move 49A and B here, as it is.
With, with the three amendments?
No, no amendments.
Something in particular about the three amendments or suggestions that gives you heartburn?
Are you talking about the one that they're not going to sit on concrete?
Right.
That's one of them.
Okay, and I think there was another one.
There was one that had a different setback, so it's more visual.
From 25 feet to 20 feet.
I honestly think they should be on concrete.
Right, that's what, that's, that was my thoughts on concrete. I can amend mine to 20 feet if you would like that, Councilman Boss. But I think that there's one particular, I think there's maybe more than one if we amended it to 20, that probably doesn't go in the best spot, right? When they move it or it does.
So the downside of putting it on a non-paved surface is...
We're not doing that.
Yeah, it would drain. The other, the other one that, the third one, is on occasion, they want the ability to bring it up to a lesser, a zero setback in some cases, to take advantage of a drop-off lane that the school's no longer using at a school. And so then what that, we would have to evaluate that on each situation then to be able to, before we could issue that permit. So part of it is actually determining what's in the right-of-way, what's not in the right-of-way. Because a lot of those drop-off lanes do straddle the right-of-way line as well, and we want to make sure they're not putting them in the right-of-way. So that would be another step that would be added to our process. But if the council thinks that's acceptable, then, you know, we'll operate and implement that.
What about the setback?
If you want to move it, if you want to move it to 20 feet...
Yeah, the 20 to 25, I don't think, neither you or I is going to be able to eyeball that from the street, probably. So I don't think we would have any major arguments against that. Other than the way we came up with it was based on other types of things we have in our code.
Kind of a little bit of consistency, but I'm willing to alter it to five feet if they, if you have...
Let's give them five feet, one of the three, so, three suggested changes, so.
So part of it is they have it on a hard surface, couldn't you put it on, because the way they set, there's probably four feet on it, you know, does it have to be complete?
Yeah, they could probably do some pavers. They don't necessarily have to pour a four-inch slab or something like that.
Yeah, no, they don't have to put a slab, but they can put it on something that's hard. I mean, you can, like you said, you can put in some pavers.
Yeah, pavement would include other types of...
Not laying concrete down that's more, yeah.
Yeah, they could do it, they could do it, same like anybody could have their driveway made with pavers if they wanted to, as long as it's strong enough to support that, yeah.
Just so they can mow around it. I know the one at Goodrel, I've driven by this summer and the grass was real tall. I think the school probably has somebody that mows but doesn't trim, and so the weeds got really high around it.
And they've responded to that concern. My, my perspective on it is that these aren't necessarily the only operators we're going to be dealing with down the road. We may get other people that don't, aren't as scrupulous, let's say, in, that's being committed to maintaining these in a nice way. So we want to make sure we have the right type of ordinance to keep everybody in check.
Is the change from 25 to 20 feet clear enough? We could act on that tonight?
Yeah.
So we wouldn't have to come back or wait or...
I believe that's a minor, a minor change.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so if we can, if that's the only one, then, and legal thinks that can be done, then it wouldn't necessarily then come back.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would amend, I've amended to the 20 feet and I would move 49A and B, but with that amendment from 25 to 20. And if we can make that change, then we can be done with that and we can move forward.
And I do believe there's a representative here, I don't know who that individual is. Okay. But if there's any questions, he was here to be available for questions.
Hopefully that helps in that way. Hopefully, that helps and that works.
Does that work?
On the whole thing.
I would say the whole thing, sir.
It's basically, it would be a six by six or maybe even less than that.
I'm just saying, it would be, at least it gets you, so it's not as permanent that if they would be...
Yeah, when they leave, then they, we can just pull it up, put dirt down, plant grass.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, they don't have to sledgehammer it necessarily.
Right.
All right.
I think we've got a motion. We got a second. Ask everybody to vote.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Item 50 is amending Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication number 23-510A is a parking modification, 25th Street from University Avenue to Forest Avenue. B is a parking modification, Grand Avenue from Fourth Street to Fifth Avenue. C is parking modification, Southeast Sixth Street from East Elm Street to East Vine Street. D is code correction, Grand Avenue from Seventh Street to Eighth Street. E is a parking modification, Southeast 22nd Street between Evergreen Avenue and East Marion Street. F, corner clearance parking restrictions, one, East Ninth Street and Cleveland Avenue. Two, Southwest 28th Street and Calder Avenue. Three, East 36th Street and Hull Avenue. Four, 55th Street and Forest Avenue. Five, East Sheridan Avenue and East 40th Court. Six, East Sheridan Avenue and East 41st Street. Counsel, any thoughts or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item number 50, A, B, C, D, E, F, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question, and I'm, this is all positive, but...
It moved in second.
We've got so many streets on here and so many, is this only done by complaint basis? Or are we driving around looking for these type of things?
It's a mix, as I understand it, of complaints.
I just wondered, I mean, these streets have been in place for years and, you know, we're, we're making these modifications. I just wonder if that's only complaint-based?
No, the new construction can sometimes modify these. There's a lot of different
Well, I don't think there's any new construction on any, maybe there is, but not where I'm looking at. But, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of all these things. I'm just wondering, how do, how do we get to this?
Yeah, and I can get a more exhaustive answer out of...
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, everybody?
Well, Carl's responsible for two. He just took credit for two.
Pursue it to rule 42A.
I'll modify it.
Carl, is this why we got all these things on here? You driving, you riding your bike around, finding these things? Okay. Now, it makes sense.
Josh?
I vote yes.
Seven yes.
Okay, item 51, there's requests to speak. And as usual, for those wishing to speak this evening in the public speaking items, we will be calling on those who have registered to speak. All speakers must comply with the rules and give us your names and your addresses or you won't be recognized. Each of the nine speakers this evening will receive up to two minutes to make their comments. Please keep your own time, because at the end of the, your time, the clerk will be turning off the mic and we'll move directly to the next person. We want to hear from everybody and ask everybody to be respectful and encourage residents, even if your viewpoints are different than others. Let's respect each other's ideas and thoughts. First speaker this evening is Joseph McCraggar.
Do I have two minutes or five minutes? Because I saw online in the ordinance, there was five. Okay. All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Joe McCraggar and I reside in Pleasant Hill, but I pay both sales tax and use tax in Des Moines, Iowa. Today, I'd like to discuss the issue of people occupying medians in the Des Moines roadways. In 2017, Omaha, Nebraska added Section 36-113 to the local municipal city code ordinances. Here is some language from that ordinance. "The city council is dedicated to preserving and protecting the health, safety, and welfare of all pedestrians, motor vehicle drivers, motor vehicle passengers, and other individuals who utilize the public right-of-way within the city, as the primary purpose of roadway medians to enhance the safety and free flow of all the roadways, from vehicular traffic, channeling traffic for turning purposes, calming traffic, and in some cases, providing a temporary refuge for pedestrians crossing busy or wide roadways. The city council finds that there exist within the city certain medians that are not designed or suitable for pedestrian use because of their narrowness, narrowness or contour. The city council further finds that pedestrian use of these medians on higher volume or higher-speed roadways within 200 feet of intersection poses a safety hazard to the user in passing motor vehicle traffic from an increased risk of a pedestrian and motor vehicle collision and can inhibit the free flow of traffic. It is hereby declared to be the legislative intent of the city council to protect and preserve the public health, safety, and welfare of these safety hazards by prohibiting pedestrian use of certain narrow or domed medians located on higher volume or higher-speed roadways within the city. It shall be unlawful for any person to access, use, occupy, congregate, or assemble on or about any median that is not designed for or suitable for pedestrian use. That has been posted with the sign pursuant to the section prohibiting such access." I called the city council in Omaha and they said that before they did this, before they put in this ordinance, they were having a serious problem with people occupying medians and sometimes going out into traffic. Since I only have two minutes, over the past six months, I've been to Omaha over 60 times due to work, and all I'm asking for is for us to adapt their same ordinance, which is ordinance 36-113.
Good evening. Peter Clay, 3205 East Pine. Beginning in 2021, the CCI racial justice team asked for a third-party evaluation of the DMPD's policies, procedures, training, and culture. We asked for this based on the concerns raised by the diverse communities within our city. These concerns reflect the lived experience of our city's residents. We have seen sufficient data evaluated by Just Voices to confirm that the disparities in our city and how people are treated by law enforcement are real. They are not imagined. This afternoon, Harvey Harrison provided you with a schedule of judgments and settlements since 2018, showing over $5.5 million as a result of misconduct by the police. This is just a point in time. The number continues to increase. The 21 CP Solutions Report that has now been received is the result of this professional assessment that the people of Des Moines needed because it is urgent that disparities in how individuals are treated by law enforcement are addressed. All of us deserve to be treated with respect. Each person should be able to leave their homes and go about their lives without worrying about when they may be detained by law enforcement for no reason other than who they are, what they look like, and where in our city they live. As we study the report, the CCI racial justice team urges all city officials and the DMPD to take seriously the steps recommended to address disparate policing in Des Moines and to improve community safety and security for all of us, who, all of us who call Iowa's capital city our home. Changes in the DMPD's policies, procedures, training, and culture are needed, urgently needed. Further delay or obfuscation or denial will not serve the common good. Only by taking seriously the recommendations in this report can we move our city forward in the best way. We can and should be a model for other cities. Thank you.
Brad Titus.
Brad Titus, 2832 Ridge Road, Ward 3, member of Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement. In 2018, the community's repeated request for a six-point racial profiling ordinance to make Des Moines policing function more equitable failed to gain sufficient interest and commitment to be given serious consideration by this assembly. In 2019, repeated requests for the six-point ordinance were met by what felt like an insular culture and a lack of meaningful action. In 2020, George Floyd was murdered, and it felt like the community's desire to exercise its First Amendment rights were suppressed by a defensive, insular culture. Requests by community members to have grievances heard and redress considered became at times animated, uncomplimentary, and disruptive. But then, finally, some progress. Passage of a four-point ordinance and the appointment of a marijuana task force, though no action has been taken on the recommendations of that task force. Potato, potato, tomato, tomato, review board, advisory board, we still need more collaboration between the community, the city, and our police. In 2021, came implicit bias training and de-escalation training. Progress was made despite what again felt like a defensive, insular culture. We got 23 excellent, actionable recommendations from Public Works LLC in 2022. This morning, 21st Century Policing's 80-plus-page report and 46 recommendations were presented. If you haven't had, taken the opportunity, it's a good read. I highly recommend it. It was particularly, I was particularly impressed with the thorough command of its contents demonstrated by Councilor Mandelbaum and Manager Sanders this morning. I feel that a recommendation, that recommendation 35 reboot is just what we need to move forward together to implement the other 42 recommendations, continue with the Public Works 23, and Kalia accreditation, if you are so inclined. Thank you for your consideration.
Viola Perry.
Mayor, council members, Viola Perry, CCI racial justice team, Ward 1. For those of you that are biblically inclined, the number seven is significant. At the beginning of the Bible, seven is identified with something being finished or complete. Seven, the command for Joshua to march around the walls of Jericho. The leperous Naaman bathed seven times in the Jordan River for healing. Now, these are just instances that appear in the Bible where it seems that God is communicating the idea of divine completeness, perfection. Now, you think, now, what's seven got to do with it? Well, let's recollect. In 2016, CCI started looking into the Des Moines policing issues, beginning with the complaint process being accessible and better designed to track data. This evolved into concerns about racial profiling in 2018, and then the community, six points that was driven by the community, six points racial profiling ordinance of 2020, not yet complete. So, heading into 2024, which marks seven years of this work, should be the year you, as council, be ready to fulfill and complete the work on policing that we've been fighting for and what we need. How many more outside consultants will you hire? How many more lawsuits will you pay? How many more people will be falsely stopped and dramatized before you take the necessary steps to implement change? Now, we know Jesus paid the price for all of us. What cost are you willing to pay? And what cost will the community pay? So, I say, let's make 2024 a year of completion to build a better city for all people who live here. Thank you.
Lowell Rude.
I think he left. He was the Ben guy.
Eddie Gutierrez. Eddie? Carolyn Yulen Higgy Walker.
You go ahead and talk, and if I need to move it down the road.
Good evening. Carolyn Yulen Hig Walker, 4111 Ingersoll Avenue. In two weeks, December 4th, you, our city council members, are going to vote on the new climate action plan called ADAPT. It's time to adopt a plan that will guide us to reach net zero by 2050. I would like you to look briefly at the new, just came out, Iowa climate statement, statement that was signed by 221 scientists across Iowa's universities and colleges. And I'm going to look at just the first paragraph. 2023 was, thank you, 2023 was another year in which global and regional temperatures broke multiple records and distant heat exasperated wildfires, degraded Iowa's air quality. Scientists continue to find that warming temperatures in the global atmosphere and ocean, caused largely by greenhouse gases from fossil fuel combustion, are interconnected and are a root cause of increasing regional weather disasters. And Jean Tacko, one of the ones that signed this agreement, ISU professor, says that there were, in Iowa, since, well, the last 40 years, $64 billion spent on climate disasters, and within the last 20 years, the $50 billion of that was spent. So, we are experiencing many disasters at this time from climate extreme weather events. As you look at this climate, this climate presentation from the scientists, you'll notice that they've done this for 13 years with all different topics. Today's topic was on solar. The new ADAPT plan brings up all different areas, building, solar, transportation, waste, and so forth. I ask you to vote for this climate ADAPT plan, and it's coming up very soon. Will be a great example to all of the metro area.
Thank you. Denver Foot.
Now, it's here.
Is Denver Foot here?
I'll move the receiving file, 51A through I.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. It passes. We have one extra item, which is a resolution in support of the Des Moines Water Works joining the Central Iowa Water Works. Counsel, any thoughts or discussion?
Well, I'm glad we're finally getting somewhere. It's only been, what, six years? Maybe longer?
Yeah.
Mayor?
We've been working on it.
I'm happy to move item one, the, the resolution. Obviously, this isn't the detailed version of what we're looking for in the, in the whole agreement, but I'm happy to do a resolution in support of this. I'll move item one.
Second. All right, it's been moved in seconded.
Yes.
Six, yes.
I can't do that, can I?
No.
Okay, no.
You can't.
Wait, here she is. Linda, the water.
We're voting on item I, or item one.
That was fast. Yes.
You want to vote, yes?
Yes.
So, it'd be seven yes with Lindas.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
All right, your motion adjourned. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, we sit adjourned. I want to thank everybody for attending. All right, we sit adjourned. I want to thank everybody for attending.